Moving on to Communications.
Oh, okay. I think you guys saw a copy of the real estate options input.
Yeah.
And the only thing I wanted to mention is we are having a blood drive here on Thursday. You have to wait to make an appointment if anybody would like to make one.
Is it this Thursday?
Yes.
All right. Approval of the minutes. Could I have a sponsor in a second?
You can move it in a second.
Roy? Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the acceptance of budgetary transfers. You have a motion and a second. Martin?
Sorry.
Any discussion? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Acceptance of the procurement record. Could I have a sponsor in a second? Martin and Roy? Any discussion? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain. Old business? I believe we have none. For new business, I would like to add a resolution to the agenda. It's Resolution 134. It's Resolution Adopting the Policy and Practice Guidelines for the County Executive to Determine Expenditures, Limits, and Priorities of the 2017 Operation -- Operating Budget. I will sponsor it if I could have a second. Bob? Pertell? Pardon me? Oh, that's...
We're doing a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, I have to... All right. Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Martin and Bob? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain. So now we can vote on the resolution?
Uh, well, you're gonna add it to the end of the agenda.
Correct.
So you can go back to 110.
But we have to vote on the... to add the resolution, correct?
No, that's what...
That's what you just said.
Okay, all right. Okay, Resolution 110. Resolution...
I had something on the business.
Oh, sure.
And it's come to my attention, and probably a lot of you have noticed it. You know, back last year, we passed a resolution for fireworks. And if you notice, a lot of these tents are popping up all over the place. And I'm not sure if that was our intent, you know, to have, you know, like people coming from Pennsylvania and Ohio and set up tents. At least my position on this was for the people, the brick-and-mortar people that are here in the county that pay county tax, that pay sales tax, would have an additional product to sell for the limited time in the resolution. And I kinda wanted to get a feel. I was interested possibly in one of three things. I had looked into a little bit of myself and tried to see if they're registered with the state, which was one of the requirements. I'm not sure that they were. I'm not sure if they're set up to pay sales tax or that the county benefits from the sales tax. And I think that was one of the biggest benefits of this, not only to help the businesses that are here, but to gain additional sales tax revenue from this. So one of the things I just wanted to run by the board, if I could work with the county attorney, if it's possible to make an amendment to previous local law where people that are selling it are a brick-and-mortar business here in the county. And I'm not sure that that's possible. If it's not, then I would, at the next meeting, you know, propose rescinding this local law. And just kinda wonder what the boards thought was on it, if you noticed any of that going on.
Bob?
Interesting thing that last night, we had a pretty building burn in Amsterdam. It was caused by a 10-year-old child that was playing with fireworks. Not that you wouldn't get them if they were legal or illegal, but it was across my mind whether, you know, it was beneficial to us that we passed a resolution this year.
Ryan?
I can't speak to some of Legislature Diamond's concerns, but I would just add that I know the two pop-ups in Fultonville were required to pay a permit fee. I believe it was $250 apiece. So there was some, in terms of sales tax, I would tend to assume that they have to, you know, comply with the local sales tax. But there, at least in the village of Fultonville, they have seen a little bit. $500 for a couple weeks of having a tent there was at least something, some impact on our local budgets.
Right.
Well, it seems, I appreciate you telling me that. It seems like they are following some of the guidelines. I'm just not sure they're following all of them. And an example I can give you, which I just feel is unfair, is if you go to the village of Palatine Bridge, up on the hill, we have a... The Shop Me Plaza, the store is...
Big Lots.
Big Lots. They sell fireworks themselves. Out front of Big Lots is a tent that sells fireworks. And here at Big Lots, paying rent all year round, they pay their sales tax all year round, and here's this tent. This is gonna be here for two weeks. And I'm not sure. But I mean, I just wanted to throw it out to the board to see if, you know, was it any interest that I could talk to the attorney after this to see if there can be an amendment, or if that's something you're interested, or if we could just...
I think, I don't see anyone, anybody here having a problem with that.
I think certainly merits and more discussion. Maybe it's a committee. I'm not sure which committee we should put that through. But I think that we should have more discussion about it. And I think it'd be interesting to find out whether we're policing or we have a way to police whether the sales tax is being paid.
Right. And I think if we go back to last year and to follow up what Legislature Diamond was saying, I was under the assumption that it was gonna be like sparkers, you know, anything tied with that. I didn't, I didn't imagine these big tents filled with fireworks, but...
And not employing local people to have those taxes, you know, where it's the brick-and-mortar.
Right.
They employ people all year long.
Right, right, right. Yeah, we definitely should, should bring it back to the drawing board.
Chair, it was in our education government. I could bring it up next to the next committee.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if that's... if for new business, I'll move on. Move on to the resolutions. Resolution 110. Resolution Authorizing County Executive to Sign an Intermunicipal Agreement with Town and Amsterdam Office of Community Renewal Grant Administration. Sponsors were Quackenbush and Diamond. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 111. Resolution Adopting the New York State Climate Smart Communities Pledge. Sponsors were Diamond and Quackenbush. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 112. Resolution to amend the 2016 budget and establish a full-time social services investigative coordinator position. Sponsors were Quackenbush and Diamond. Move it to the floor for discussion.
That does cause me trouble, correct?
I believe so. Anyone else? Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 113. Resolution Amending the 2016 Operating Budget, 2015-16 Public Health Emergency Preparedness, Grant Funds Reclassification. Sponsors were Quackenbush and Diamond. I'll move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 114. Resolution Acceptance of the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Funds. Sponsors were Quackenbush and Diamond. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 115. Resolution Amending the 2016 Operating Budget, CSHCN COLA Funds. Sponsors were Quackenbush and Kelly. I'll move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution, uh, sorry. Resolution 116. Resolution Authorizing County Executive to Sign the Contract Valiance Language Services LLC Translation Services Agreement. Sponsors were Diamond and Wheeler. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 117. Resolution Awarding Transportation Services Bid Number 03-16. Sponsors were Diamond and Quackenbush. I'll move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain. Oh, sorry.
I see it. Just wondering if it was...
It's in the attachment. Because it's different for your...
Go where he has.
Yes.
Resolution 118. Resolution Changing the Committee Meetings for the Months of July and August 2016. Sponsors were Pertell and Isabel. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call a vote. Or, sorry.
There was one question. I think Ryan had that to the last time about one in early July, having the second meeting.
Okay.
And this chair must take that time off, so if that's the reason we did it that way.
Okay.
That's all.
Martin?
And also, I believe it was for the sake, if there's a local law that's going to be presented at a committee meeting, it takes 10 days to be undered.
Right, right. True. Anything else? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 119. Resolution Confirming the Reappointment, Reappointments Term of Representatives to the Fulton, Montgomery, and Schuhery County Workforce Development Board made by the County Executive. Sponsors were Kelly and Diamond. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 120. Resolution Authorizing the County Executive to Sign Revised Agreement, the Continuation of... The CLEO, the agreement between the County of Montgomery and the Counties of Fulton and Schuhery. Sponsors were Pertell and Kelly. Move it to the floor for discussion. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Pass.
Resolution 121. Resolution Approving the Setting Date of Public Hearing on the FMCC's Proposed 2016-2017 Budget. Sponsors were Wheeler and White's. I'll move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none.
Here, I guess I was just saying the title. Probably should say Resolution Approving and Setting Date. That's okay. If they can add the "and" in the title.
So that's a typo, you mean?
I say, because it makes sense when you add "setting."
Okay. Are we fine with that? Okay, I'll call the vote, which I think I did, right? Okay, so...
Wait later.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Pass.
Okay, on to 122. Resolution Approving the Collective Bargaining Agreement between Fulton, Montgomery Community College, Fulton County, Montgomery County, and FMCC Buildings and Ground Unit. Sponsors were White's and Wheeler. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 123. Resolution Endorsing the Concept of Selling FMCC Land to the Fulton College Association, or sorry, to the Fulmott College Association to Develop New Student Housing as a Component of the Global Village Project. Sponsors were Pertell and Diamond. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution Endorsing the Proposed Allen House Administrative and Community Center at FMCC and Authorizing the Distribution of a Request for... A Request for Proposals. The sponsors were Diamond and White's. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Pass.
Resolution 125. Resolution Confirming the Appointment of the Commissioner of Social Services made by the County Executive. Sponsors were Ducece and Kelly. Move it to the floor for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, just a minute to recognize Commissioner McMinn and his work. I'm really appreciative of your efforts. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Congratulations. Okay, Resolution 126. Resolution Adopting the Montgomery County Exit Interview Policy and Rescinding the Resolution 141 of 2001. Sponsors were Diamond and Pertell. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 127. Resolution Authorizing County Executive to Sign a Lease Agreement for Vehicles for the Sheriff. Sponsors were Wheeler and Isabel. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 128. Resolution Denying the Application for 2014, 2015, and 2016 Town and County Tax Corrections. Sponsors were Kelly and Wheeler. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 129. Resolution Authorizing the Sale of Real Property Acquired by a Tax foreclosure. Sponsors were Wheeler and Pertell. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing, oh, sorry, Martin?
Were we able to find out if that $408, $400 any sense was taxes paid to make the municipality yours?
I did not, um, I don't know. I mean, I had to.
I believe it is. The numbers came from Sean directly, but I was not able to reconfirm that prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Chair, can I have a look at the essence on this for any reason?
I'm not sure. This is the...
It's the right...
Particularly due to the effects of policy that was in place that we expected to reimburse the taxes, reimburse the municipality.
Well, we can add an amendment to it stating that...
Hey, I wanted just to make sure that it...
I would imagine that the $400...
It's in the expenses.
It is in the...
It is in the...
Is the amount back that we...
Back taxes.
You could just say, rather than the $408, $400 amount of back taxes that were reversed in the village, and then there's no question.
I'll make a motion for that amendment in a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Amendment passes.
So now the resolution with the amendment. I'll call the vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 130. Resolution Amending the 2016 Operating Budget Medical Services. Sponsors were Wheeler and Isabel. Move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 131. Resolution Amending the 2016 Operating Budget. E911. Let's see. Do I have a... yes. There's no sponsors? Or... Okay, Wheeler and Isabel. Sorry. I was looking at the wrong sheet. I'll move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 132. Resolution Approving the Abstracts of the Audited Claims. Wheeler and Quackenbush were sponsors. I'll move it to the floor for discussion. Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain.
Yes.
Resolution 133. Establishment of the Greater Mohawk Valley Land Bank Corporation, a New York land bank pursuant to Article 16. Sponsors were Quackenbush and White's. I'll move it to the floor for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. I am in support of this resolution, but we're not quite there yet. There are still some questions and some issues to be resolved. Mostly having to do with getting the maximum benefit out of our entering into the agreement for the land bank. And then there are some of respect to the contract as understood, our agreement. So I think this will be ready for passage for the next meeting, but I would like to move to table the resolution.
Okay. Second, Martin? I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstain. Okay. The last one is Resolution 134. Resolution Adopting the Policy and Practice Guidelines for the County Executive to Determine the Expenditures, Limits, and the Priorities of the 2017 Operating Budget. Sponsors are Martin and Bob. Legislature Pertell. I'll move it to the floor for discussion. Ryan?
Thank you, Chair. I have a procedural question for the county attorney when it comes to this resolution. The charter states that the Policy and Practice Guidelines for the budget from us to the County Executive must be passed by June 15th of any given year. So my question, and as we've done the past, the previous two years, so my question to the county attorney is, frankly, what's the point in doing this since it's past the deadline? There's... It doesn't appear that there's any effect by this resolution.
Well, what I can say is, in addition to what you said from the charter, it says, I believe it also says that if the changes aren't made by that date, then it's deemed that the previous year rules continue in effect. And those are the guidelines that the County Executive then proceeds with. So at this point, by the charter, it's deemed that the rules from last year are what are in place because no changes were made. So technically, you missed the timeline to make changes. Well, I respectfully will not speak to the point. But I will say...
Mr. Chair, if I may, just as a... So if this resolution were to pass, in effect legally speaking, for the charter, whether this differs from last year or not, last year's guidelines would be in effect without any type of other opinion or challenge?
Yeah, the charter says that unless the changes are made by June 15th, the previous rules are in effect, so...
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I think in view of that, perhaps we should, we should just, we'll just vote this down out of convenience, I suppose. More importantly, just a little while ago, we voted on a resolution, almost $10,000 transfer, I think it was $9,000, from a line item in the sheriff's department. A telephone line item. Just having that amount of money extra in that, in that line item is the kind of thing that we should be looking at when we review the budget in the coming year. Those particular rules that we go by, we'll go by last year's rules. That'll work just fine, but we'll get to it. So let's just vote this resolution down.
Well, we can, we can just pull the sponsorships.
I was gonna say, I'll call mine.
Because, yeah, we're not losing anything because this, this was last year's resolution, so... Okay? No, they pulled the sponsorships. No, they pulled the sponsorships.
I've got a question to ask, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Matt, I gotta do me a little work today for the chair. Air conditioning company, or are you ready for that?
Yeah, we're aware of it. We've sent some people to work on it, and we're definitely gonna do that in two weeks or so.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? Martin? Bob? All in favor? Thank you very much.